Recording in progress.
All right, I have seven o'clock. You all had just started. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under that indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Call to the public. Anyone here this time would speak?
I just got one question. You know, looking back at everything that's happened with this vague language, with the zoning and all that, you know, the issue that came up over the Ronin Lake. And I see that they're still doing zoning and setbacks. How do we go on if we have the problem with the language? I mean legally, I mean, why aren't we getting this fixed? I mean, that language was vague.
We're looking at it right now.
We're looking at it, but just, my God, this has been months. I mean, all you gotta do is say, we have a lawyer. What I don't understand is, we have a planner, not these guys, the other guys, and they have lawyers look at all this language. We have a lawyer, did he look at all this language? I mean, nobody caught anything. Now, I mean, I just, I find it hard to believe. Would do.
I think it's, you can try to anticipate every single possibility and reality out there. That book, I mean, it's
Yeah, that's the same.
No, but it's already still over a hundred pages, and, you know, that's what we do appear to be.
Well, probably, I think we should rush them to get this thing fixed.
Well, we're not. You're talking about the new master plan?
No, talking about, you weren't here. We're talking about the Ronin Lake incident with the zoning setbacks and all the BS that they said it was all vague language, we're gonna get to do with the lawyer team.
I know.
Yeah, and, but I mean, you know, I mean, in here, I see, I didn't go, I don't go to the zoning meetings, and you're asking for setbacks. I mean, how do we go on? If that's such an issue, it should be fixed by now. I mean, it just, it shouldn't be that hard. I mean, lawyers should look at it. We got a new planner. You write it up, and I mean, if we have to have a public hearing, have a public hearing, boom, it's done. But I just don't understand why we keep going on for months and months after this, and we haven't got it straightened around yet. I mean, it just seems, I think we gotta fix things, and not let it dwell forever.
Sightlines always seem to be in the eye of the beholder.
Well, that's it. I mean
And when you look at where sightlines exist, unfortunately, the lakes aren't all the same all the way around. You have peninsulas, you have coves, you have hills, you have backdrops, you have all kinds of issues. You also have lots that were divided up and plotted back in the twenties.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And, you know, so, so there's issues there, plus there are easements, and, you know, I could rattle off a whole bunch of other things.
I know, I know, it's ridiculous, because it just seems like a judge would just sit there. I mean, there's an intent there to protect the landowners around it. I mean, I mean, it just, our legal system's screwed up right now. It seems that we've gotta get something straightened around, not let it fester too long, but I'm just worried about more of these issues coming up.
Yeah, we, we, you know, three years ago, we tried to put something together.
Yeah.
And we, we thought we had something that would work, and it really didn't, because you needed to have a computer to figure out the angles and everything on it. And so, in, in order to be fair to everybody, we're probably gonna, not we're probably, we're having to start all over again.
Yeah.
Plus, sightlines that worked in Oakland County for some of the big lakes out there may not work here for some of this.
Every lake's different.
Yeah.
So I just, I just think there might should be a little bit more urgency in getting it done, so we don't have any more issues down the road. And I, I look at all the meetings that have been postponed and nothing being done, and, and we, but we have something that's gotta be fixed. I mean, we got a lawyer, I mean, can't get this thing fixed somehow. Yep. I mean, get some language together. I don't know. Apparently, all language is good, because then if the judge can get it over. I mean, you know, it's crazy. What's the sense of having reorders, regulations? If a judge could just, you know, you've got money, you can do whatever the hell you want. Sorry, but that's what it is. So, all right.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else in the public? Entertaining motion for approval of the agenda.
So, who?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So next is approval of the minutes, June eight meeting. So, I'm sure now it's been a few weeks, I don't believe you guys have had a chance to read through them. I'll go through page by page quickly, in case anybody has any concerns. Did anybody see?
Thanks. You do your best.
Anything on page one? Page two.
Kurt, you don't wanna unmute that. That's you.
I muted everybody.
No, you just muted.
Richard muted now.
Yep.
Show on here.
There we go.
Thanks, John. Page two, nothing. Page three. I'll scroll slowly, but please go. Let me know if you guys have seen anything yet. We have the hard copies in front of us also. Page four. Any issues with the June eight meeting minutes? Will we approve? Support. All in favor of approving the June eight minutes as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Next item on the agenda is the July thirteenth meeting minutes. That was correct. Was here and wasn't. Page one. Page two, the issues. Should make the okay out of this at fifty foot mark. Page three.
Which I don't want to mute.
There is a mute all function somewhere. I don't know exactly how. You're on Zoom, if you can mute, please.
Four. Page five. We're on page five of the July thirteenth minutes. Page six of six. Any issues with the July thirteenth minutes? Move. Support. All right, there's a motion of support. Approve the July thirteenth minutes. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five minutes have been approved as presented. Move on to old business. Item number one. This, is there, I guess, we have gone through this a few times through this similar document, within the last two meetings that Zach prepared. I don't know, Zach, is there anything you feel that would prevent us from making the decision on this preliminary site plan approval at this time?
Well, I will jump ahead to page twenty-six, which is not a page I usually like to have in the staff report. And before I do, I, I wanna state, this afternoon, I was two miles from Oxford High School, the township. Hall is the county sheriff operations center, and some of the parents who tried to contact kids were in the building, so if I'm a little spacey here, my drive over helped clear some stuff, but Ross poked me if I, I get a bit spacey there. So, an update is, we have received a traffic impact statement. I've had time to review it. I would defer to the township engineer for details. Overall, it, the, it appears generally consistent with the norms and practices that, that are done. The only thing I saw is that in, in Microsoft Word, there's one section where the header didn't get updated, but that's something that Microsoft Word does on those documents. And the quick summary is that the difference, the projected difference isn't that substantial for this development compared to kind of the background noise. That's the quick version. So that's an extra piece of information. This body was interested in getting that before preliminary approval. It's something that sometimes is preliminary, sometimes final. I generally prefer to have it at preliminary, because you're looking at the big concept of, does this fit here? But they have provided, we received it. So, to, to frame the process, plan unit development is reviewed by this body with recommendation that goes to the township board. So there's, there's multiple steps. Approval of preliminary, preliminary approval of the plan unit development, site plan, special land use, basically grants an applicant permission to apply for final approval. So it doesn't vesting rights, it doesn't say you, you get to do this, so where there's missing information, that has to be filled in. And as raised in the report, there are often times where there's information that is collected between preliminary and final. So that, that's pretty common. So there are some things, though, that the planning commission should make a determination on. I'm gonna start at the bottom of page twenty-six. So, planning commission should determine if the one inch to one hundred fifty foot scale is adequate for substantial review of the preliminary plan. So your zoning ordinance says the biggest scale should be one inch to a hundred feet, and that's something that we'd expect for final plan, for the final site plan, because we wanna make sure utilities are in proper places and things are spaced. So the question tonight is whether or not the hundred fifty foot scale provides adequate details for review at this level. Another thing that can, that requires attention is whether or not to waive all or part of the requirements to show location of existing structures within five hundred feet of the lot. That's something that we would expect to be in the final site plan. It's kind of vague whether or not it has to be in preliminary or final, but it's something you can waive, or you can say, we need to know where those buildings are. Number three, we've received a traffic impact study. Number four, statement of use. So the planning commission should determine if that's necessary for preliminary review. The statement of use is required for special land use. Plan unit developments are special land uses, so that's how it got entangled. One of the conditions we recommend is that the special land use not be final until the, the site plan and plan unit development are finalized. So that's something that can be provided later. For those of you who recall, the statement of use was something like the wedding barn hat of, this is what we're gonna do. Now, for the meats and potatoes, the planning commission needs to determine if the parallel plan is reasonably feasible. So, the idea with the parallel plan is you need to be able to believe that it could be developed as it stands or with minor modifications. And the reason why that's important is that this plan unit development is requesting additional lots beyond what's developed in there. And the parallel plan serves as the basis for how many additional lots could be included. There are a couple of modifications to developmental standards, lot area, lot width, and setbacks with the plan unit development. And that's baked into the plan unit development, but in order to approve those modifications, there needs to be a finding that those modifications are consistent with sound planning and design, are necessary for the preservation of significant features or open space on the site, or are otherwise necessary to result in higher quality design. Next up, some more meat and potatoes, is determining the criteria, if the criteria for additional lots are satisfied, and what sort of bonus they qualify for. So your zoning ordinance allows up to fifteen percent increase in the number of lots from the parallel plan with several criteria. The applicants have said, we believe we're doing these three things, and this body gets to determine if they qualify for zero to five percent increase for each of those things. Next up, the, the next couple here tie into the open space. So by default, your ordinance says, for open space community with residential use, you have to have thirty percent of the total lot area preserved as open space. We went through discussion, through the math last time, and they're a little over three acres short. Your ordinance allows a couple of options for that. Township can say, nope, you gotta be at that thirty percent, no question, but you also allow an ability for non-contiguous open space. So that's a fancy way of saying, here's where the project is, but we're gonna have some open space over here. Now, that open space still has to be preserved, but it doesn't have to be necessarily part of the, the project site itself. The other option is that the township can reduce the open space requirement. In order to do that, there should be a finding that the site characteristics surrounding natural features and proposed design features lend themselves to reduced open space requirement. So a couple of different approaches potentially there. It'd be good to get some comment from the applicants if they're, if they wish to pursue one or the other. Ten there. So this is kind of a, a thing that pops up with the landscaping, is that with plan unit developments, this body can determine if alternative screening beyond what the zoning ordinance requires would be appropriate. When you read the text, it's really intended to apply for commercial plan unit developments, or whether there's a mix of commercial and residential, but that's something that comes up. And then the overall, does it meet the criteria for preliminary site plan, special land use, and plan unit development approval? Those are the big things to decide. There are a couple of potential conditions we've listed there. I don't know that I wanna run through them all, but if anyone has questions on them, let me know, I'll be happy to speak to it.
So, commissioners, I don't know, you guys have any comments or questions on any of these items, or if we go through the traffic study would be good to review?
I think the traffic study would definitely be good to review. Number nine, I think that's one that definitely should be considered and reviewed as well.
Number nine, where?
On the, under the summary of comments here, on page twenty-seven. At the top there, the, the consideration for the non-contiguous lands.
The open spaces.
The open spaces. I mean, is that saying that they can have land elsewhere within the township set aside?
Correct.
Thing I don't like about that myself personally is, I mean, you build this development area and you have this extra three acres elsewhere. I mean, what's, what is there to prevent them from developing that, so it's no longer part of that open three acres or selling it?
If it were not, and so there are some communities that will say, for plan unit developments, it all needs to be touching.
That, that would make more.
But it's, it's an option, it's not required by state law, and yours allows. Any open space, whether it's part of that site or in a far corner, would still have to be protected with the same mechanisms. So it would have to have something that the township can come in and say, you shall not develop this, whether that's a deed restriction or conservation easement or something like that, that vehicle, that mechanism would be the same, no matter where it's at.
Thanks, Zach. Yeah, just a reminder, you know, Zach provides us with basically a report on what our ordinance states, right? And our ordinance states that this is an option, so it's not one way or other, but just something to think about.
Okay.
So this is the traffic.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
As to the open space, I mean, we're required for thirty percent, and that would be forty-six point ninety-six acres. Just FYI, we are basically giving up eighty-nine point seven three acres, so we're almost twice of what we need. Granted, we're missing three acres from upland, but we're giving more wetlands and we're giving more natural features into it.
Understood.
Thank you.
So you're requesting a waiver, the?
I'd like to request a waiver, yeah. I mean, we're short three acres, but again, we are also donating almost twice the amount that's required.
Understood.
Thanks for the question for clarifying. So this is the traffic impact study, so I don't know which page you guys would, if you want me to just go through this slowly, commissioners. Do you have a certain page you wanna go to? A lot of data that we received, so. Focus that more if it goes kind of the history and.
Is that, in the, in the traffic study, is there anything like, you usually have a summary or something like that?
I took a.
Kind of distill this down, and you're looking through this, I don't know what.
I think it's just before the appendices.
What is the conclusions?
Yeah. Let me see.
On Zach's review.
Well, I'm talking just in the traffic.
You're flipping through a pretty good, are there accidents?
Yeah, there are accidents.
How, how, how many years back are they going? I know I did a traffic study years ago, for what reason?
Page twelve.
Yeah, when the state place did, they said it's a bad road.
Hey, Ross. Ross, did you determine if I could join the participation?
Um, so since we're not under an emergency order, technically, we're not allowed to do remote. So unless it's a medical emergency or military leave, unfortunately, no. Is my understanding?
Does that sound good? Yeah, the, the, the state was a bit vague with the medical condition, so a strict reading would be, you have to have something that you're getting treated for prevents you from coming here. A broad interpretation could say, if there's COVID exposure, that may be a medical condition, so a tight conservative reading would be no, a broader may allow. I'm a planner, I can give you multiple answers.
I mean, if you read the last paragraph of the conclusion, to me, seems pretty clear.
What page is this?
On twelve.
Twelve.
The last, I mean, that, that, to me is, I'm assuming these people are, you know, experts in their field, or at least have some professional designation, but they're saying that based on their analysis, it's not expected to have no impact on the roadways and intersections. It's well suited for a P and D. That seems to me to be a green light. That's the way I read that. Ross, we can't, yeah, John, is this, 'cause he hit even camera?
I'm on page.
I saw this somewhere. It's, I mean, they have a hard copy of your team.
When was this study?
When was this done?
Yeah, what, what was their timeframe?
We just got this.
No, I know, but when was it started?
You know what I'm saying, when they, they give us a timeframe. Twenty.
Just twenty-seven?
They're using data back to twenty sixteen. But their conclusions, they go back to twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I don't know if you have, anybody has a specific page you'd like to see? I'm just going slowly through here. Chad, Kurt.
Well, their conclusions are basically negligible.
What they said.
Yeah, just more, based on control, they break it down in a certain way.
Yes.
It wasn't State Police or Lansing?
No, he's in a, he's in a, he's in a state police.
And you may have noticed in the, the site plan that was in there, it actually showed cul-de-sac at the end of, I believe it's Valencia, so.
Yeah, he's got the lots still at the end of the cul-de-sac where on that segment he's using.
The ones at the top that you eliminated?
Yes.
Yeah, good point, Zach, thank you. Any other questions heard on this one? Traffic portion or?
No, I think it's better on the, not especially preliminary.
I have the site plan up, I really have the, the issues. Let me see that. Just let me go over, I got it from here. Yes. Yes, the main items like Zach mentioned are on twenty-six of the planners report. What we need to consider, obviously, conditions also below that if we so choose.
I was, not the last meeting, but those, a couple meetings before that just came up and I thought we'd kind of addressed most of these, especially since this is a preliminary approval, allow them to go forward and get more detailed approvals?
Under, like the waivers or findings.
Like the first item, like the one, one inch and one fifty, I thought we kind of said that was okay for preliminary, but we had that kind of crossed off. Thought we said that we didn't really need to house it on preliminary, so number two was kind of taken care of. I mean, I hate to have these guys, it's like we keep starting over again, it's like groundhog today and.
And so they have been discussed and if this body had said, no, we want to see that, the applicant would revise it, but it's a good practice to say, we're approving this and yes, we know you don't have this thing and we're okay with it.
Right, specifically a couple of things that I remember, we wanted the traffic study, which now we have, and it was the item of the, this three acre deficiency that we're kind of debating, whether or not we can include some wetlands in that. One thing that they did do, which I think is, you know, very decent is they pulled the lots out up there. When I walked in, I could see why that, people were a little upset about that and that's no longer a point, although we do need the cul-de-sac or whatever turnaround for the road, for the third apartment.
Yep, and that's a detail.
Should be addressed, or is a detail, right. That will come through in the final, because this, obviously, has a lot more to go.
Yes, yes.
Item, one of the items on Zach's list is whether or not on preliminary, we need the location of the houses. Now, it's not showing on the screen, on the houses along, like they, that's the.
That's what we did talk about, that we said not on preliminary. I mean, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, no, just something to, I'm just pointing out.
Yeah.
What Zach mentioned.
So if I could offer a couple of process things, if you could go through and the chair could say, for example, does anyone have objections to the scale that they've submitted in? And then you would be on the record and just saying, we're good with this. If you want more formal, you could vote to say, we waive the scale requirement for preliminary site plan, so that there is a record of we knew these things and, and we're okay with it.
Yeah, yeah. We can do that, yeah. So I will go through, starting on page twenty-six at the bottom, and I don't know exactly, from the way you've laid it out, it doesn't seem like we need a vote on it because the vote is on a motion, if there isn't a motion at this time, then, you know, I guess there is one way, just to make sure we all address each point as we go before we do the motion.
Yeah, so there, there are lots of ways to tackle it. You could do one monster motion that incorporates everything, or Robert's rules allows the chair to say, unless there are any objections, is the scale okay? Or the scale is okay? And that allows still folks to say, no, I don't like the scale, so it still allows that feedback.
Yeah. Thanks, Zach. All right, so we can do that for clarity and then item one, the scale, and I don't know if everybody.
I think the scale is fine for preliminary, but I want to see it set at a hundred for the final. So I think that, I would, I would approve that.
Anybody opposed to that? Then number two, right, so this is the location, like I mentioned, right, for preliminary, is there issue that anybody has, not seeing the location.
I agree with what Kirk had on item number one, that would be addressed in the final.
Yes.
Any other comments regarding that item? Then number three, traffic impact statement, we have that?
We have the, so I think that's a good point.
Four, statement of use, this summary of it, obviously, we'll have to have a final one, like Zach mentioned, if there is a final approval submitted, but it is on the front page of the site plan, but it's not labeled as a, it's more of a site data type stuff, but it's not really.
So it needs to be so labeled in the final?
In the final. Five, which is the item for the parallel plan, which we have reviewed, which has seventy-seven lots, if I remember correctly. I don't know if anybody has any issues with the parallel plan originally for, maybe some who else want to hear, there were issues that the homes were not set back fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark, which was corrected on that interlock plan. That wasn't early on in the process. Anybody has issues on item number five there? No, I don't. Okay. Number six, the commission should determine if the proposed developmental standard modifications are consistent, sound planning and design. This one has to do with preservation of features or open space, which there is wetlands here which are regulated, which will have to be gone through that agency by the applicant.
People, yeah.
I don't know if we have any issues as the plan is submitted with number six for preliminary. Obviously, for final, we'd have to see all those reviews. Any concerns on item number six? No. Item number seven, and this is really the incremental bonus, zero five percent for the additional lots. Okay, there needs clarification on this one or?
You guys want to go to sheet twelve, kind of list the, all the, what is it, six or seven things that we can apply? We've definitely covered three of them.
Are you talking about in the?
For the bonuses, in items like sidewalks or walkable entities, the architectural materials, stuff like that.
All the things that were added as part of the request.
See, we've met four of them, so.
I'm sorry, right, what sheet you mentioned?
Number twelve, in that same, on the same.
In the same one?
Yeah, yeah, sheet twelve, on the middle of it.
Thank you. Just want to make sure, talking about the same.
Yep.
Sheet twelve.
We got A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. I believe we've met E, D, E, and G. Granted, we can only apply three of them, but we've met four.
Then, planning commissioners might be know if you want to reference the site plan. Are there any decent items, if we're unclear whether or not they're on there?
I do, question four, if I may.
Yeah.
For E, it stipulates that it's accessible to the public. Will members of the public who don't live in there be able to come in and use the trails?
I think it's a good point, you know, being a busy street, there's white lady chairs, if there's, you know, pedestrians walking in, I think it'd be a bonus, but then if you go into the subdivision, do the box, it's safe.
Not necessarily, do you understand?
No, absolutely, that's, that's a safety issue. As a father, I mean, I'm, you know, as a father, I came down there or whatnot, I think it's a good safety feature for anybody to just go on there.
See, with the stuff, to move from originally connecting it to possibly open trails.
Yeah, we did. Got a left that come off the, we didn't.
I don't know, I'm showing it here, but the pathways are in terms of like a black line.
Yeah.
And then there is sidewalks.
Okay.
It's part of the proposal.
And a bridge where you can have beaver ambulating.
Yeah, you can walk through there. Again, going back to the previous discussions, I think they've met the requirement.
Back to that page here, I mean, seven. So, and for clarity.
Can we read that book and then we want to go?
I swear, I could be going to bed for me.
Sorry.
Do we have the option to go into bed? Because I would vote no.
Literally, we're doing bath and bedtime at our house. Sorry.
So.
Again, my question, I just want to make sure it's clear that the, for each one of those items, you can, your bonus can be zero to five per item.
Yes, with the maximum of fifteen. So if you do all of them, you're still capped at fifteen.
I understand. The commissioners have issues with item number seven as it's submitted?
What I'd say for the applicant is on the final site plan, you should list, here's what we're doing, the.
As far as out of those items, yes.
Yes, they, they need to be referenced on the final site plan.
Okay, number eight, planning commission should turn with site characteristics, surrounding natural features, those design features on themselves to reduce open space requirement, and this is in relation to the three point three acres, that is, we're short in upland, right, we've heard, take in account the large amounts of wetlands that are being preserved. So, does anybody have questions or concerns regarding item number eight from the planning commission? When Zach, why, I didn't, I didn't judge basis, I didn't have to.
Okay, make, make sure on the final, it's, it's broken out.
And the applicant's comment there was regarding Zach's point in the last meeting where he asked to make sure that retention bases, whether or not they were included or documented as part of that, right, Zach?
Yeah, yeah.
Richard, I may say something like, Zach had mentioned the open space, like what he said, we provided almost in excess of fifty acres of open space, you know, because of the feature of the property, even though it's a challenge, and one of the important things that you guys have, you know, the ability to waive that, you know, that we're short three, three, a little bit more acres because of the challenge of the property. Now, it's, it's, it's got some challenging things, there's a lot of wetlands and ponds, lakes, whatever you want to call it, because of the challenge, you have the ability to do that. And one thing please keep in mind, like even, you know, the hills that are, even have sidewalks, we're doing sidewalks, so we're doing a lot of stuff, and the important thing is that we have sewer. I think this should be a great concern for everyone, that they have sewer in an area that's got a lot of wetlands and ponds, so it's cleaner for the environment versus having septic fields, and we know how often do they fail and stuff like that and accidentally that discharge of the big body of water. So there's a lot of things that we're providing, the edifice to us, but, you know, providing things that, that's what we'd like to get you guys to vote hopefully on waiving that, the three acre shortage on that item.
Thanks for your comments.
Yeah, so to kind of reset and frame it for folks, the zoning warrant says thirty percent, if you've got a residential, planning unit development needs to be preserved as open space. The total area of the project is one hundred fifty-six point five four acres. There are caps on the percentage of different types of land that can count towards that. And where exactly those numbers fall and what counts and doesn't count varies by community. I'll say there's always a struggle, there's always a struggle for, of how do we treat lakes, ponds, and wetlands? Because you, well, communities want to preserve those features, but you also want to recognize that you couldn't put a house in a lake. So we don't want to give you credit for not developing a lot where you couldn't, but you also want to credit. So, so the caps that you have are maximum of twenty-five percent of the required open space can come from suburb.
What I'd say for the applicant is on the final site plan, you should list, here's what we're doing, the...
As far as out of those items, yes.
Yes, they need to be referenced on the final site plan.
Okay, number eight. Planning commission should turn with site characteristics, surrounding natural features, those design features themselves to reduce open space requirement. And this is in relation to the three point three acres, that is, we're short in upland, right, we've heard, taking into account the large amounts of wetlands that are being preserved. So, does anybody have questions or concerns regarding item number eight from the planning commission?
When Zach, why, I didn't write the budget basis, I didn't have to.
Okay, make sure on final it's broken out.
And the applicant's comment there was regarding Zach's point in the last meeting where he asked to make sure that retention basins, whether or not they were included or documented as part of that, right, Zach?
Yeah, yeah.
Richard, I may say something like, um...
Yeah.
Zach had mentioned the open space. Like, like he said, we provided almost in excess of fifty acres of open space, you know, because of the feature of the property. Even though it's a challenge, and one of the important things that you guys have, you know, the ability to waive that, you know, that short three, three, a little bit more acres because of the challenge of the property. Now, it's got some challenging things, there's a lot of wetlands and ponds, lakes, whatever you want to call it, because the challenge, you have the ability to do that. And one thing please keep in mind, like even, you know, the hills that are, even have sidewalks, we're doing sidewalks, so we're doing a lot of stuff. And the important thing is that we have sewer. I think this should be a great concern for everyone, that they have sewer in an area that's got a lot of wetlands and ponds, so it's cleaner for the environment versus having septic fields. And we know how often do they fail and stuff like that, and accidentally let discharge in the big body of water. So, there's a lot of things that we're providing, the edifice to us, but, you know, providing things that, that's what we'd like to get you guys to hopefully on waiving that, the three acre shortage on that item.
Thanks for your comments.
Yeah, so, to kind of reset and frame it for folks, uh... The zoning warrant says thirty percent, if you've got a residential, uh, planning unit development, needs to be preserved as open space. Uh, the total area of the project is one hundred fifty six point five four acres. There are caps on the percentage of different types of land that can count towards that. And where exactly those numbers fall and what counts and doesn't count varies by community. I'll say there's always a struggle, there's always a struggle for, of how do we treat lakes, ponds, and wetlands? Because you, well, communities want to preserve those features, but you also want to recognize that you couldn't put a house in a lake. So, we don't want to give you credit for not developing a lot where you couldn't, but you also want to credit. So, so the caps that you have are, um, maximum of twenty five percent of the required open space can come from submerged lands or lakes, rivers. Maximum of thirty five percent can come from wetlands. And so, the rest of it would have to then be uplands. Your zoning warrants does provide the two, uh, variations of non-contiguous and waiving it, so... This isn't an easy conversation to have, because you look at it, it's a really large site, and you think, well, thirty percent, you can find a way to get thirty percent. At the same time, there's a lot of, there is a lot of wetland out there that doesn't count towards it. And good planning practice is you would prefer to have wetlands as part of open space as opposed to an individual lots, because that's more likely to protect it as a wetland for longer. Because a guy's not going to just mow back a little bit farther every year, dump his leaves. Well, he's, he will, but people in the association will know and call it, and we're more likely to stop it. So, by having more wetland as part of open space, that's a benefit, but it also isn't beneficial for the man. So, it is a challenging discussion.
One question I have, and I guess I'll address it to you guys, is with the homeowners association, what sort of, and I hate to use the word guarantee, but just for the sake of interest, let's say guarantee, does the township have that the homeowners association won't, five years from now, say, oh, we're not going to use that as wetlands or whatever, let's mow it over, we'll backfill it in, and we'll make a fire pit out of this, or something? I just, that's my concern.
The bylaws. The bylaws of the master deed will prevent that.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
That's the enforcing honor.
Yeah.
You're not doing anything that you're not allowed to.
So, will we have a copy of your bylaws?
Yes, you guys do actually review it, right, Ross?
That's part of the process.
Because I don't want to have this, you know, come up five years from now, oh, didn't you know the homeowners association changed that all over there, they backfilled this in?
I thought they did.
For major amendments, they are supposed to run it past the township.
Anything major has to rerun back through the township? Minor things?
He's saying, um, association, association can change it.
But if our ordinance prohibits it, then they're under trouble.
Well, yeah, you guys put this stipulation out, not the association.
Okay, well, that's my main concern.
Yeah, that's what I'm just...
Okay, so that's the number, we're on number eight. Appreciate all the input, anybody? Any other, well, seven and eight really, questions or concerns on item number eight? Number nine, so the non-contiguous property assessed by open space.
Eight, nine, how much do you have?
Yes. Kind of do, and, and, I don't know, Kurt, Steve, Garrett, Chad, if you have any?
Well, nine, they're looking for the waiver on this.
Right.
And I guess I fall back on what Zach just been saying here, that you'd rather have the wetlands, even though you can't count them all, preserved more so than the upland. So, I would see that as, uh, I guess a trade-off.
A bad trade-off.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Curtis, if I could ask you this question, if you were looking for a lot, and you have open space which is flat, or open space within a wetland, and that should use, and hypothetically, you want to build a house, which one would you choose?
Yeah, you want the, you want the view, yeah. I want to see the ducks come in, or I want to...
Absolutely, I was hunting there tonight. It's beautiful. And that's what we hopefully try to preserve these features a lot.
See, he's getting a bill, and he's hunting.
So, for item nine, the commissioners, is there any issues with that item number nine? Sounds like matters, to make sure that everybody...
Yes. Well, and so is it, is it, is this bodies comfortable with recommending a waiver to the township board for the thirty percent?
We recommend the waiver.
Yes.
Okay. So, then, item ten, alternative screening, and I think this maybe on final, I didn't think Zach mentioned, maybe this more applies in a commercial development, but... Or was that up there, up here on the north?
West, by, what, by?
Yeah. So, screen between that one house?
Yeah, so, a couple of detailed things, is we do recommend a couple of different tree species, because we know it is wet there, because there's water body. But kind of if you read the larger text of alternative screening, it references walls and those types of things. So, it presumes you've got a planning unit development, like with the store side, and then with residential side, and you, trees won't block the sound so much.
So, just, I put this up here, this is part of their plan, this, and it kind of shows what...
We are willing to swap off some of the trees, uh, because of the wetland and the items, like just the ground out there. So, you made a recommendation of a few different species, Zach, and we're willing to, uh, put those in there.
This is what currently looks like, trees on that north edge that you're referring to, Steve, and along White Lake also.
All this vacant land, right, I've got old trees right now, but, you know, it's something you want actually...
Basically, when they clear out the houses, a lot of trees, there's just lighting, something to kind of break up the stream.
So, any of the commissioners, is there any, I think, alternative screening, seems to lend itself to something other than trees, right, which I think, in this case, trees would probably be the best thing we could do.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, I don't know if anybody else has comments. Number eleven, basically is the summary of all of it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for these.
If you want the full detail, it starts on page eighteen, and runs through, still going...
Are you talking about in your planning...
Yeah.
Okay.
It runs eighteen twenty-six.
Yep.
Well, we went through these, Zach, line by line. We need the motion, yeah, is that where we have it, Kurt?
Yeah, we need a motion.
And it could be as simple as based on these findings, which are documented in the minutes we grant favorable or unfavorable with or without conditions.
Well, sounds like the conditions, I don't think we just talked about, right?
Well, we have a set, we have a set of conditions here that are one through ten.
Oh, okay, so this is...
So, we can vote to say that favorable determination is made based on the one through eleven, net of number three, which is the traffic report, since that's already done supply. And then, we would also say that we would vote on the potential conditions for approval are the following items, which basically are things that would have to be either added or as part of the, uh, the final, uh, site plan.
And just a comment for everybody, the preliminary approval doesn't give rights to develop it as it's been submitted, it allows the applicant, if it's granted, to go and start working with agencies or review and determination from those agencies. Just to let them know, Ross, maybe if I misspoke something? Yeah, basically, after preliminary is just designed to be a general overview for the most part, based on the criteria and the section that they've been reviewing, before they could be considered for final approval, there are a number of agency reviews that would be required, in addition to additional information required for the site plan documents per the standards for final PUD approval. So, basically, it says in our ordinance, preliminary PUD approval does not in any way guarantee that final approval will be granted, it's just basically the first step that is necessary before they can go and seek out the necessary approvals from the agencies having jurisdiction. So, thanks, Ross, and then just Steve for the conditions on the end of the report there. I think item number four is...
That's the one, that's the one that we've kind of, I talked to the fire chief, and he said it would be a little bit more difficult swinging these trucks through the cul-de-sacs with an item being there.
He's going to be jumping the curve. I think that it's much easier and safer for his trucks to go around, so we'll have to discuss that item.
Yeah, thanks for the comments, yeah, and that was something that Zach put on there, just as, hey, this is potential, and other communities have done it, it's not something we require, it's just we...
Yeah.
Well, that we kind of talked through on final as well, all right?
Yeah, and so, it's here because it documents if you really want it, to let them know now. And, and as mentioned, when there are cul-de-sacs with landscaping in the middle, the fire chief usually wants no parking fire lane signs through the cul-de-sac. It's a bit mixed places like it, because it's landscaping instead of asphalt, in some cases, it can have a positive impact on stormwater management, but it has the impact on circulation, so it's, uh...
Commissioners, is there any other pages or items you'd like to see? This agenda, I don't know. We discussed this letter, which one, um, in regards to final, just kind of addressed with...
We have in the last two meetings, and we can look at it.
Are you over that part, or?
Well, here's...
Here at the last...
Yeah, so, in, so what Garrett's referring to, Ross, and I don't know, shared or not, but the, you know, the letter we received?
It's a public comment.
Yeah.
You can hear it during public comment.
Yeah, so I...
That was kind of a...
No, you're, it's right.
It's not, it's... Also, it's a comment that has been discussed. Has it been finalized, though, has it been addressed? We have a recommendation from our planner. So, the verbiage, I'll show you. The verbiage is what the verbiage is now, which needs to be followed from without the application.
Yeah, and I could speak to that more at the end.
Yeah, here, here, if you're on the page, you see the page this says? Eight. And it notes the access, and it's, and it's the section, and it's quoted there, and then Zach's interpretation is below it. Yeah, under central services, or no, no, access and circulation, these are... Seven. Seven going to...
Seven going to...
Eight, this one makes a...
And I think the other thing you have to look at on this too, is the parallel plan doesn't require that.
Correct.
So, the whole process here is, this ordinance was designed so that a PUD would not be placed on a gravel road. And precisely what, what is, the definition is here, allows for a lot of leeway in what was said. And people say, well, is that shell and must and all kinds? No, but understand, it says that the development could be made if, on a parallel plan process. So, does it make sense to say, no, you can't do the PUD, we can't form more houses to the development? That's, that doesn't make sense.
And so, I can make the case that that combination of shell and handle is done purposely to allow for flexibility. So, you know, the idea is that PUDs, you want to have them where there's infrastructure to support them. But there could also be cases where flexibility would be warranted, where this thing you're wanting to do is better, and we, we want to have that flexibility. So, the language is peculiar, and there are ways it could be written better, but that, it doesn't mean it was accidental. I can, I can see where it was done purposely that way.
Thanks for asking, okay.
Kurt, do you want to make the motion?
Okay. Uh, what I'm going to make a motion is to approve preliminary site plan based on the bottom of page twenty-six, numbered one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, which the planning commission has discussed and approved. Now, what I will also do is make another one that picks up the items one through ten, except for four, on the list of potential conditions for approval. We'll vote on those two things separately.
Support. So, we have a motion in support. Ross, can you catch it? So, that is a motion for recommendation of approval of the preliminary PUD to the township board.
Correct.
Based on the items one through eleven excluding number three in the parallel workman review dated November fourth, twenty twenty-one. Sound right? All right, so, motion, first motion in support. Um, Ross, I don't know, do we just do aye, or no? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Any opposed? Want to be opposing for the entire thing here? This is the first, Kurt's first motion. It'd be for a recommendation... Of recommendation of... Of approval to the board. To move forward. Yeah. Based on these, what, these items here, which we walked through, the scale, the...
So, you want to walk, a walk through motion number two?
So, I don't know if we want to do this one motion or two motions, I mean, I think one motion, and then the conditions being X, Y, and Z from, you got it?
Because there's, there's a few of the things we can pick out to add in the list of one through ten.
Well, if you are making the recommendation for approval, I would think my opinion is you would want the conditions to be within that same motion.
Right, the conditions...
If you are attaching conditions...
The conditions are for the final anyway.
Well, you could make them for preliminary or final, that's why I'm saying, if it's included in the same motion, that it would be, because right now, we're not making a motion for final, we're just making a motion for preliminary.
This is just preliminary.
So, if there are conditions, then you would say prior to final, we have to see these items.
All right, and we're, we're good as we stand, then, I think.
I would say, if there are any of those conditions included in the motion...
Yeah, because anything else, when they produce the final site plan, uh, and all the reports that are necessary... and all the reports that are necessary with that, then we can discuss that at that point.
Just to be clear, is the motion clear? As stated for everyone, just want to make sure. All in favor?
Will we do it again?
Yeah, because I don't, it sounded like Garrett wasn't clear.
Yeah, we said we didn't.
Yeah, I don't want, you want to do that all on this? I don't want to have any...
Yeah, so let's do it again. Let's put the, put one through 11 minus three for recommending approval of a preliminary site plan for Lake Urban.
But then did you... Did you want to add the conditions into that one motion?
Yeah, put the conditions in there.
So you would say conditions X, Y, Z from this letter prior to final?
Right, do you want me to read them through again?
No, no, that's not necessary. Just clarification on the motion so I can report it.
So we're just condensing it to one motion as opposed to making a second one, which would, we really don't need the second one.
So the initial motion would just be basically recommending approval of the preliminary PUD based on those numbers one through 11 minus three from this review with the condition that items, whichever items you want, are fulfilled prior to either preliminary or final, depending on what you want to do.
Right.
And so I'm clear Kurt, that that second part of it is one through 10 minus four, right? Yep. The cul-de-sacs with the islands.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac doesn't need to be there, but the question is, do we need to cover one through 10 or not?
It's a good practice to.
Okay. So we will delete, so do one through three and five through 10.
So you amended your approval?
Those are conditions.
All right. Motion in support and then the motion in support. All in favor, I guess we'll go maybe one by one so it's clear.
You doing right?
Roll call. Yeah, go ahead.
Chairman Scholz?
Yes.
Chairman Linn?
No.
Chairman Kraus?
Yes.
Chairman Erickson?
No.
And Chairman Scholz?
Yes.
All right, the motion has passed. Covers old business item number one. Is there any questions from the applicants?
No, I just want to say, thank you very much. You know, I know people who started this process almost two years ago. We had a meeting with Ross and the supervisor, the head of planning committee, to be able to do something commercial. And we don't want that. And I did not even mention that up. But it's been long gone. And then as you all know, in the final, I still believe it was so boring. We still have to get EDO, EQ, road commission, there's still a lot of stuff. But I was thinking that at least we don't have to go through all these islands again because we've got about 11 meetings right now with you guys. You know, I like that you do that way. So we're taking your recommendation, working together versus, you know, against each other. So I really appreciate everybody's time tonight. And hopefully we'll take it to the next step and see how it goes. So it's gonna have a long way, but it's just nice to get the motion and to get, you know...
Ball rolling, really.
Yeah. And I want to say thank you to Steve. He took the time to walk. And then everybody's welcome to walk through the property, by the way. And he went down the cul-de-sac and he had mentioned out of the people that came from the hills of Tyrone that did not want to see a road and we eliminated three lots there, we replaced them. But at least just to show goodwill that, you know, we're working on these things just for the whole community to be satisfied with this development versus creating issues. I used to live in hills of Tyrone, you know, so, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know the next item on the agenda is the master plan discussion.
Why would I see it?
Because, yeah, does the planning commission okay with mending order of business and putting new business item number one ahead of that? Entertain a motion for that since the applicants aren't here. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so new business item number one will be moved ahead of old business item number two, which is maybe shared private driveway application. Garrett, I think last, be able to go over this. Zach has given this kind of a report on it. Steve, I don't know if you were able to look at it.
I just...
To summarize, in the last meeting, we reviewed it and then we asked the applicant to get a determination from the fire chief that would be responsible for the area. And we did receive this letter from the fire chief. I think it makes sense to share that first off and then we can go through Zach's review, so.
Yep, so the quick summary is requested for a shared private driveway. Shared private driveway is considered up to four individual lots. There's been some additional information provided since this report was originally done, including some details of the proposed shared driveway cross-section and layout and some drainage details and the reference letter from the federal fire department chief. The shared driveway would be to allow for a split of the property. The split would be consistent with the zoning ordinance allows for the area. I'm jumping ahead to page four. There's a limit to how many lots can be served and the length that can be served with shared private driveway. And the length is measured from where it connects with the main road all the way to the back of the shared driveway. And the reason why we got reference from the fire chief is that the proposed shared driveway would have pushed it past the 1,200 feet that the zoning ordinance allows. The zoning ordinance says you can allow waiver if a dry hydrant is installed. In this case, the fire chief basically said, there's nowhere to get water there. We're not going to lose sleep if there's not a dry hydrant there because there's adequate space for us to get our apparatus in and turn it around. So it sounds appropriate that a waiver could be granted from the length. There's no issue with the number of lots to be served. The the shared private driveway approval process, there has been driveway access easement, maintenance agreement provided. It needs a little bit more tweaking to get it fully consistent with the zoning ordinance and into recordable form. It shouldn't be heavy lifting. There are just a couple of tweaks here and there. The sketch does show cross-section now. It's not, what I would say fancy engineering standards, but it's consistent with what the language says. It's written out that we're going to have this width and this type of stone and it's consistent. Let's see. One thing that I would recommend is getting a plan to show contours a bit more. And so the sketch plan does show the drainage direction, but Livingston County should be able to provide through their GIS system, two-foot contours so you can overlay that and you can see exactly where the water's going to drain. With some additional detail for, this is the culvert, the size of the culvert that we're going to put underneath there. Just little extra details. As far as design standards, mentioned there's not an engineering plan under A, but it appears generally consistent with the additional materials that have been submitted for drainage. I mentioned adding topography and some details about the culvert that we'll go across there. Site distance, there's some language that can be added to the plan that says we won't block the site distance as described at the intersection. The easement width is the 66 foot wide required. The finished surface, as submitted later by the applicant, will be 20 feet wide. The construction materials will be consistent with what's here based on information submitted by the applicant, six inches of gravel with various materials that are consistent with what's required. We talked about maximum length. It's longer, but the fire chief says it's not going to require, he's not concerned about not having a dry hydrant there, so that could be considered for a waiver. It does not require turnaround because there will only be two lots served by it, so no, and they're not proposing any T-turnaround or cul-de-sacs. Intersection design standards, there wasn't crisp engineering with it, but it could be addressed again by some notes on a plan that says we won't intersect the road at 90 degrees. And it's at a cul-de-sac down there, so shouldn't be too difficult to get 90 degrees. No issue with intersection offsets from streets. It's more than 250 feet away. For vertical clearance, if you recall from the previous shared driveways, there was a note on there that said we will maintain a vertical clearance of at least 15 feet above the paved surface, so that could be added to the plans. There's no information if there's going to be any stop signs here. It's probably overkill if there are only two rows there, but we deferred the township engineer for that. We don't believe there are any request modifications based on the information that we have. We will defer to the township engineer on the Ashdough design standards. It doesn't have the different radii in there, but there is a plan showing it. It's not a conversion of a shared private driveway to a private road. The setbacks and structures are shown consistently, will be shown as part of the division. We had a discussion last time about requesting access to use the shared driveway immediately to the south of this and perhaps the applicant can request or can describe that a bit more. And let's see. So the summary comments, some of these are outdated because of the additional information. There's a little more information that ought to be provided on the plan, maybe not the full set. There's an opportunity for granting waivers. There should be some presentation that there was a discussion to get access or the planning commission can say we don't believe it's necessary to try to get access on that other shared driveway. The planning commission should determine whether or not favorable recommendation for the length greater than 1,200 feet. Revised maintenance agreement, consistent with what the zoning ordinance says. The access for the proposed eastern lot, that's a bit moot because the plans that were submitted after this was done show the existing driveway, so that's where the access is coming from. And the plan has been shared with the fire inspector already.
So for clarification on this one, it is required to have a public hearing, so we will need to do that before you can actually take action on it. But you can at this point go through the information that's been provided based on the review and make recommendations to the applicant as to whether they need anything additional before you schedule a public hearing.
Thanks Ross, appreciate it. So here's the letter, let's see, in case you guys haven't seen it. And the item in there, which I'm gonna see, I'm sure is that the addresses are marked right at the road, which I'm sure they wouldn't be anyway, to get deliveries and stuff like that. Do you guys have any comments regarding anything at this time?
No, I guess if you guys have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get land split right so it's all built there, so.
Okay. And do you have any questions regarding this? I think the one item that would be kind of helpful, I think, maybe...
I got a quick question, Ross. When this goes up for public, meaning will the neighbors around that then be notified? So they have not been yet.
Correct.
Okay.
All properties within 300 feet will be...
...limitation. As part of it.
Yep.
It'll be a public hearing.
For all shared driveways, private roads that are within 50 feet of an adjacent.
We'll see the neighbors that might have a problem to come through then.
Correct.
And we, in last meeting, there was one neighbor here and actually mentioned conversations with a different neighbor. Maybe you can speak to that. It's regarding something Zach put in the review is the, did you attempt to use the existing driveway that's already there as a plan? So maybe comment that for those who are here.
So I had talked to one of my neighbors as he was driving by and he had seemed kind of hesitant about it. So I figured there's no point in possibly animosity or letting Ted over the topic. I was letting him run his driveway back where it is right now into the house and we just key off of that driveway where it's back by acres. So it's, we're dealing with the requirement would be to have a driveway 20 foot wide instead of the 16 foot that I had done. And it wasn't a big deal.
Okay, thanks.
So Ross, this will come up for public hearing in January?
That would be, let me look at calendar here. Mostly, let's... We have a meeting in December.
So I don't think we have time to get up for December.
Nope. Yeah, it'd be likely the first meeting in January and at that time you take action on it.
So we don't need to act on anything?
No, but right now it would be beneficial to provide direction on any additional information. Would you like to see anything that you're willing to waive or modify based on the review that they provided?
That driveway right there, it's shared between these two homes, right?
Which one are you referring?
I think I'm looking at the right lot. It's, it looks like it's coming off a cul-de-sac here and it picks up 0016 and 0017, these two homes. This driveway is to this house, right?
Yeah, so there's...
Isn't our zoning ordinance, we had this discussion with my properties? You have four homes on a credit. So then he's just, he has the right way is what I'm getting at. So is that part of his deed for that property?
It would be a new shared driveway that's being proposed right now, so.
Right.
Just for theoretical split right there, this lot and this lot.
So then that's your...
No, it's a separate existing shared driveway to the south.
Gotcha. So he's trying to do his own thing.
Correct.
Okay. So it'd be privately, those two properties as opposed to editing out the existing shared driveway in their lease agreement?
Correct.
I guess this shows it better. Other driveways and they would come off in there.
So we need a better maintenance agreement?
Yeah, it's like 90% there.
And we need to waive the 1,200 foot limitation, correct?
Yep. And I think a question for the applicant too is whether or not you're going to want a fully engineered plan or if you're comfortable with some variation of what's been submitted so far.
Yeah, and this is what we have so far here, showing the screen.
Do we have someone that verifies as built on something like this?
Yeah, the engineer is supposed to inspect the shared driveways. Yeah, the engineer is supposed to inspect the shared driveways with the lane used for that, that's the relation.
Okay. And I find he has the, there it is. This was the other item we were given in the last meeting, showing that basically what, six inches or one by three?
Yeah, for what Livingston County requires for driveway for a minute, that's suitable. I guess sand back there, most are.
And the, and the, what's that?
Mostly sand back there, it's not, you don't have marsh or anything?
No, it's, yeah, clay.
Yeah, so that one by three would be.
I guess still need the maintenance agreement, why, I think it is, good to know, I don't know, you know, for the clearance issue, but. All right, are you probably going to have, are you running power above, I guess your plan is run power above ground or below?
No, it'll all be underground, it'll all be underground, so.
Okay, all right.
When I talked about company that would be putting it underground.
And is that woods right now where that driveway is planned to go, or is that?
Well, so on the drawing, it shows that that driveway is currently there. So there's one driveway already currently there.
Yeah.
That's currently there. The driveway back five is, yeah, it's woods right now, there's nothing.
Okay, but in this front section here, is where your proposed driveway going, is that all wooded or is that open?
No, that driveway is existing today. So we installed that driveway with the driveway waivers that formed before trying to do the split and the lane usage.
Okay.
So I wasn't prepared to do it in this new calendar, so we had to, just because with one house servicing one house, you can do it with the way that's at one, and it's, um...
I guess, I guess, the thing is, will the clearance be an issue for, let's say, emergency vehicle?
Clearance you're saying?
Highlights, yeah.
No, it's, you got, there's plenty of clearance.
And that's something we want the maintenance agreement to have.
Yeah.
Just a statement like that in the maintenance agreement verifying that it'll be maintained at minimum fifteen foot vertical clearance.
Now, we have trees cut back from the twenty foot, another ten foot probably on each side, so there's no trees even overhanging in the actual driveway portion of them.
Yeah, and I think, like Ross mentioned, this is how I feel, I think it'd be good to know in the maintenance agreement, and then that way, let's say, you sell the home or something, that whoever buys it knows that, hey, this is what the expectation is, and in the event a truck needs to go down there, right, we don't, you want, at that moment, you don't have time to cut a tree, right? So, just my opinion, I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Does it add on to the maintenance agreement on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in general, you know, I guess this is just my thoughts, it's better to leave more trees up than to take them down, right? Especially for the neighbors and, but to add that point in the maintenance agreement would be good, so it doesn't slip, so I don't know. Somebody else have comments or questions on this one?
Think I'm going to schedule a public hearing for next, for the meeting, we can do that.
Any else care?
No, I was just going through some of this, I just wanted to make sure that you're looking at a difference of about three hundred and seventeen feet between what's allowed and what's, is exceeded, so. And if the fire marshal's okay with it, then.
When I talked to him, he was very comfortable with any of you. He says that is a great wide cul-de-sac, no issues at all.
Yeah.
So I think the language in there is trying to take into account situations where it might not be so nice.
Yeah.
Not conformities and otherwise, it's narrow.
I have no other questions before it goes to public hearing.
Is that clear with what we've requested?
Um, yeah, I can deal with you, Ross.
Yeah.
What I need, I think you want culvert size on the plot and stuff like that, so I'll get what you have written for that in straight for the public hearing.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. That's new business item number one, any questions before we move on? All right, so old business item number two, and did we see a... Still warm from the printer, unfortunately it's not too complex, there it is. So we did receive a work plan, is that the right word to put it in here? So, from planners regarding our master plan process, and it does give, I don't know, Zach, do you want to run through it? It'd be the best way you ever...
Yeah, so I will kind of lay the big outlook, because there are generally several discrete phases that are doing certain things and different tasks within it. Sometimes they'll overlap, sometimes they have to be one after the other. So the main, first main phase is kind of the kickoff. The next one is the background, what you have documenting assets and challenges. Phase three is the visioning, what do you want, what do you want to be? And then four is the actual preparation and adoption of the document. So kickoff, roughly takes one to three months. These are all rough, sometimes it can be very short, sometimes it can be very long. There's a community I helped with their master plan, and it took six or eight months to get their survey questions done. So it just got really long, and, and, you know, it's, it actually worked out nice, because that meant that all the new 2020 survey or census information dropped for them, so. Couple of tasks in there is establish a steering committee, and previously this body had said that this group, the planning commission, was going to be the steering committee. Some communities will have like a subset or a different mishmash. Ideally, there would be perhaps a smaller group with planning commissioner, township board member, staff, just to provide shorter, quicker guidance, you know, like, for example, a practical thing, if we're putting pictures in there, like, hey guys, which pictures do we put on these pages? Instead of having to get the whole band together and make that type of decision. So whenever you see in here steering committee, if you guys determine that this body is the main steering committee, just in your mind insert planning commission.
Let me ask you a quick question, Zach. Do we have any issues with the Open Meetings Act to have steering committee meetings that is made up of planning commission members?
What I have been told from attorneys who are far smarter than myself is, well, it's sometimes conflicting. As long as the subcommittee isn't making decisions, you don't have to meet with, at open meetings. But you would want to make sure that whatever composition that body has, you don't have a quorum of any body. So if you have a smaller steering committee, maximum three planning commissioners, maximum three township board members, that type of thing.
Yeah.
As a best practice, I'll tell you, I do like to notice them, just, hey, steering committee is meeting today or on Zoom or something.
And I'm not trying to close the meetings to the public, I just wondered if there's any issues with that.
Yep, so that's my understanding of how it works. So then, kind of, once we've figured out who's going to help make decisions, the big and small ones, is defining and confirming the scope of what we want. So this here is kind of a, a rough scope and task based on my understanding of what you've discussed, but things can be added or taken out depending on exactly what you want. So once we figure out who's going to be making the decisions, we go through and we say yes to these tasks, we want more visioning sessions, or whatever, or we want to have a public hearing after we've developed goals and objectives, type of thing. One thing that I think would be very important, not everyone does this, but is a website. We can prepare a website that'll just say like Tyrone TownshipMasterPlan.com, I think is the thing. And on that, we can put all the documents, we can have links to surveys, all those types of things. So that's something that can be going on in the background there. One of the things that I know is very much of interest is a survey. As mentioned in here, there are a couple ways to do that. Most places now do online surveys. I think we use an outfit called SoCo, there are others. With the advantage of SoCo's, it's relatively easy to use, you can print hard copies that folks can use. There are other ones that are a bit more rigorous, I believe it's called PollCo. Actually requires you to enter information like your name and your address, and it verifies that whoever's answering it is a registered voter at that address. We haven't used it, I know folks who have used it. If that's something that you're really interested, you can do it. Otherwise, for the regular poll, you can limit it to a number, two people per IP address. So you know someone's not going in there ten times a day trying to win the HGTV Dream House. So on a couple of decisions here, there are things that we can do all on our own, things that the township can do, or things that we can work together. So for the survey, we could prepare the survey, we could prepare a little flyer or postcard, send it over to Ross, and Ross has the tax rolls, and he can send that off to everybody. Or we can do it. If you do it yourself, you save money, and plus it's going to be quicker, because you've got the database right there to hit print and send them off. So those will kind of be decisions that affect the price. Any, oh, one other thing that some communities can do in the kind of kickoff phase is a training. We had that with Mr. Luon briefly, but there are more formal training programs from Michigan Association of Planning, Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Township Association, if you want to have that, and that can, that's usually good to do at the front, to know what master plans are and how you're doing it and elements of that. Before I jump to the next phase, any thoughts, questions, comments on those first tasks?
No, I'm guessing they will probably want some community input on the survey questions. I suspect that people expect that, and I think getting their input on what kind of questions to ask is just as important as sending a survey. Again, that's just my opinion, but.
All right, and one thing Mr. Luon told me to ask is, there are different ways that these projects can be structured. If you want a written down estimate or contract, that's something that we could prepare after the scope of the work plan is defined. Otherwise, we're your planner, and it's billed hourly, which is what it would be anyways. But some communities have preference working one way or the other. So if that's something you want that document to hold, let us know, and we can prepare it once the work plan scope has been firmed up.
Yeah, I suspect we'll have some kind of budget, so we don't get a bill for a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in the end of next December, you know?
But I want a Carlisle Orban monster truck, it'd be fantastic for code enforcement. All right.
I have just a super quick question.
Yep.
Notice of intent to plan that's pretty much ready to go, just want to triple verify the mailing list. Are we good to send that out whenever, or is there a specific time that I should wait?
Yep, you can go out now, so Mr. Nichols asked about intent to plan letters, or as I like to call them, plan to plan letters. So basically, when you start a master planning process, you have to let all of your neighbors know, and utilities and other folks know that we're working on a master plan. We're going to send you a master plan to review at some time in the future, be ready for it. That can start right now. It has to happen by the end of next phase. So when you start visioning, you need to have that out so the folks can have the opportunity to provide input on that. And that's one of those things, sometimes we do that for the communities, where we write the letter and we send all the mail out. Other times, the community does that, and it's kind of been a hybrid, where township staff went and got a preliminary list of the names, we threw some other potential folks who ought to be in there, or good practice be in there, we provided a sample letter, so that's ready to go. And one of the things that we also like to do for, at the back end, the final letter, I'm jumping the gun here, but it's, instead of mailing hard copies to everybody, we can say, here's the draft master plan that's been approved for distribution, go on the website and look at it. So that saves some of the costs and people are able to see it more quickly. Are folks generally comfortable then with that phase one, the kickoff? Do you guys want to have a separate training session just for master plan, or do you feel you're ready to go?
From what I can tell is, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but for myself, I think we're ready, and I think the biggest thing is we, as a planning commission and township, need to look at what items we feel need to be changed or reviewed, right? Because I think all of us can say we like where we live, right, and we like it how it is. Maybe I'm speaking only for myself, but from what I've gathered, from a lot of us is, we like our township, right? But obviously, we see there is struggles as we get applications, and maybe we could be better prepared for some things. So, yeah, I guess maybe we need to come up with a list of things we want to see that we would focus on, like this task two, right, scope and work plan.
Well, we could circle back to this too, I'm going to, I'm trying to touch on these lightly, like we're playing volleyball on a hot August beach.
Yeah, no, and if somebody else has any comments or, you know, wants to go through the, from the beginning again, let us know for sure and do that.
So the next phase then is documenting the conditions that are around. Really nice thing is that doing a master plan now, the new census numbers have dropped. Seminacog has really good data, Livingston County Planning Commission has really good data. So I was just looking on their website, and most of the stuff we need for demographics is there. So it's, we don't have to hunt, a lot of it's there. So the task one, the community profile, that's ready to update pretty much in a day, could be done. Generally, this is three to six months, what's, and it's likely to be closer to the shorter side, again, because so much of the information is available, so that's a very nice thing. One of the other tasks, I call it task two here, is reviewing and analyzing existing plans. So that's what your neighbors are doing, looking at their master plan. So if they intend to put a landfill right on the border, that's something that we need to be aware of. We don't want to put a bunch of houses there, type of thing. Livingston County has a master plan, they have a park plan, so we're going to want to review that and see what's, what they're intending so that we can align with that.
We could strictly plagiarize some of these other plans, too.
Yes, we steal the wheel and add spinning rims, is what I like to call it.
Why then? Because you plagiarize it, give it to us, we okay it, and then we pay your bill.
Task three, inventory existing land use and natural resources. So this is documenting how our property is being used now, and some... And sometimes, if it's a really big task, or if it's a really big challenge, it can be split up more. So we're just looking at land use, we're just looking at natural features. One of the things that I was debating whether or not to put on here is inventory public services. So that's roads, police, fire, sewer, water. That's, it's kind of bundled in there, but I think for future, it's best to blow it out for its own.
Have you actually had some time to take a look at our master plan?
Yep, yep.
So you have a feel for things that need to be fixed and things that are probably okay the way they are?
Yeah, it's not a bad master plan, it's a very good place to start. I think there are ways that it can be massaged to provide even better guidance for what you want. So yeah, it's definitely not a bad one, it just needs a little more love, like the Charlie Brown tree. Not as bad as the Charlie Brown tree, but get a little love, it'll be even much better. Any questions or thoughts on the background phase? Is there anything else that you think is really important to include in the background and base conditions?
Does the master plan supersede ordinances?
No. Master plan is a policy document that provides guidance for ordinances. It can also provide guidance for capital improvement plans and park plans and those types of things, but it doesn't have the weight of law. Now, if you're gonna do zoning though, you have to have a master plan. And so, the community I was working on in the thumb, they had zoning since 1975, but they had no master plan. And their attorney said, you guys gotta get a master plan, someone challenges this year going down. So it's, yeah, policy document guidance. The next phase is the really fun phase. At least I believe it's the funnest phase, 'cause that's where you have your JCPenney catalog and you're circling all the things you want for Christmas. So once we've got kind of the base conditions of what's here, an idea of limitations on development, you can't build here 'cause it's swampy or there's arsenic water and whatever, that's when we start to envision what the future is. And it's my understanding that there's a lot of interest in having visioning sessions or community workshops or charrettes, or whatever you wanna call them. And this is kind of in a decision point. If, my understanding is the last time there was one of these, correct? One workshop?
Right.
There are all sorts of ways to slice and dice this thing. So you can just have one great big meeting, you have a corner where you talk about this thing, a corner where you talk about that thing, a corner where you talk about that thing. Or you can get more specific. You can have one meeting where you wanna talk about transportation. One where you talk about housing, one where you talk about commercial and industrial. You can have one where you talk about the lakes areas, one where you talk about the freeway or the other side. So there's some communities where there are very different outlooks on how they want to be. And in some of those cases, you have kind of a sub-area plan for this area and a sub-area plan for the rest of it, and you have a meeting for one or the other. So one of the decision points you'll have to make is, how do you want to best get that input? How do you right-size that meal where you can get meaningful information? And we have all sorts of tools and tricks to get that information in a meaningful way. In addition to myself, there are lots of people who've done these types of public meetings way more than I have, who can help facilitate that for us. Next task, we've had visioning sessions, we have background. We'll draft what we believe are goals and objectives that we've heard through the process. Now, we don't adopt them, that's for you guys to adopt or to confirm. But we try to draft basics so that you have something to start from. Another task, we prepare future land use. So that's the map that kind of sorts where things are the best fit. And that's why we looked at other community plans, that's why I've got an idea for infrastructure of roads that are over capacity or can support it, or we have a lot of capacity for sewer in this area. Sub-area plans. So in some communities, and you guys kind of have a sub-area plan now with your Piro District on the west side of 23. There are lots of different reasons why you might have a sub-area plan. If you've got a gateway, you might wanna look at that more closely. Sometimes communities do it if you have a use that your concern might go away. So I'm gonna pick on Mount Pleasant near where I grew up. They had a large state hospital there that they knew wasn't always going to be a state hospital. So they kind of just circle it and said, we're not sure what this is gonna be. It's an important area, and if it ever turns over for development, we're gonna look at it. Most commonly nowadays, that's for golf courses, because it can be a challenge to keep them going. But you don't wanna necessarily say we want housing there, because there can be tensions. Other sub-plan areas are commonly lake areas, industrial areas. I think one more example that I thought was relevant here. Oh, one of the other uses that are potentially go extinct are, well, not necessarily here, but large car dealerships. That's a large amount of space and it's important to have an idea, or at least an idea that you need to look at it should it turn over. So one of the things we'd need to identify is, do you want sub-area plans? And where do you want them to be, if you do? Task Five, an implementation plan. So oftentimes, master plans, they will sit on the desk collecting dust. And whenever there's a dispute about the zoning ordinance of what's the intent or goal, then you'll dust it off and you'll look at it. Meanwhile, all the beautiful goals and objectives that you've adopted don't happen. So an implementation plan is basically, here are certain steps we wanna do. Here's who's responsible for it, and here's the timeframe when we think it's gonna happen. So the idea is that if there's a responsible party, it's more likely to happen than just saying, here's our plan. Oftentimes, it falls to planning staff, but a lot of things can be distributed in other places as it makes sense. So that's something, if you wanna have one of those, that kind of decision point, I think it's really useful in having an actual master plan that gets you to your vision. The final phase, the development of the plan and adoption of the plan. I suspect this is actually on the shorter side, the six, as opposed to the 12 months. But that's assuming we've done our homework in a good process upfront. So we will do the actual draft. One of the decision points is, what sort of format do you want the master plan to live as? There are all sorts of ways we can make it easier to use, we can have hyperlinks throughout the thing. The big thing right now is whether it lives as Microsoft Word or InDesign. So a lot of the fancy pants planning firms like to do it InDesign because that's software, Adobe InDesign, that they use for doing magazines. So you can make this thing look super pretty, just like a Vogue magazine where the things are in links and all that stuff. I will tell you, my background, working for local units of government, I prefer Microsoft Word, because then I can actually get in and change the thing. I don't have to call the planner up every time I need to make a change here or there. So that's a decision point. If I argue, I would go for Microsoft Word. We can make it very pretty with styles and formats and pictures and everything.
We want people to be able to access it from home, you know?
Yep, well, in one way or the other, it will be a PDF document that folks can use. It's kind of the background of, if you need to do a minor change, do you have to fire the whole mechanism up and get your planner engaged? So we've done a draft, this body has, will hold a meeting. You have to have at least one public hearing. Where that falls, it's more towards the end, which is a bit weird because you wanna get public input to the plan. But because of the workshops and the surveys and the other things, you've already got input into forming it. So the formal process for the distribution draft is, once this body is comfortable with it, with the plan, it will recommend to the township board that you should distribute this plan to all the people we sent the plan-to-plan letters to. And once the township board has blessed it with distribution, it goes out to all those entities that we noticed, and they have 63 days to look at it and provide comment. And that's something where, like I said, it'll be on the website, so you just need to send out a short letter. Here's the QR code, here's the link, go there. So you kind of wait then for two months. Once you get those comments back, you can incorporate them into the plan, you can make some changes. Or you can just say, it doesn't make sense to us, we're gonna keep going with this. And that's where the large variability with the six to 12 months. So if you get really big comments or changes, like, hey, we're gonna put a freight airport in with an intermodal transportation hub right on their border, you might wanna go back and change some things up. I don't expect an intermodal transportation hub anywhere near here. Once you've then got it back and all your comments in, and any changes you make, you hold a public hearing, and we can help prepare all the materials for that. And then any changes from that, a final draft. And by default, this kind of bleeds on the Task Five adoption there. Planning Enabling Act says, planning commissions are responsible for preparing and adopting a master plan. But then it says, but the legislative body can by resolution take adoption authority over. So in that case, the planning commission acts as a recommending body to the township board. I will tell you, as an elected official, I like to be the final vote on that because that's very important for the future vision of the community. I can tell you as a planner, I can make an argument that the planning commission is the best place 'cause they live in die planning, so I have that fund to molt. If, so that's a discussion for the township to have, who's the ultimate approver. And we can provide sample resolutions for you guys to use either way that you go on them. So that's my quick version. I have some burns on my feet from that beach volleyball. It wasn't quite as quick as I thought, there is a lot. And...
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Any questions, or do you guys wanna come back, let that sit, and then come back next week and start making some decisions?
Yeah, I think we can, that's a lot to go through. And obviously, we have to look at specific items on this before you send it, see what we want. But the main item is the intent to plan, which it sounds like Ross, you're close to getting ready to send out.
Yeah, it's all set. Just take it, triple verify the addresses.
It's good that we do that, that way it's out there and then we're not all just... From my own thinking, based on what I've seen in the last year, a sub-area plan on the 23 corridor is...
Is that a rural area, the Tyrone?
Yeah, and just in our township along 23 is probably a good idea to look at. Seems like it's, we're gonna get more and more applications for that area. Just based on if you ride a bike wherever, on there, there's a lot of open space.
Well, and I think when we did the plan in 2010, we were looking at strip malls and restaurants and that kind of stuff.
Big box stores, workshops, that sort of thing.
Which is not gonna happen.
No.
And I think there's been a real sharp turn as to what we anticipate will be the commercial side of Tyrone Township. I suspect right now, most of the residents would like to keep Tyrone Township rural in nature without having a lot of issues for commercial and that type of operations. But on the other hand, you have to be aware that times change.
Well, that's one of the things that is explored during the workshops or vision assessment, is rural is different for everybody. When I grew up, rural meant that you had little cornflakes coming from the sky during harvest season 'cause the elevator was two blocks from your house and you got stuck behind a tractor coming into town. Some community, when I was in Dexter Township, their rural was, we just don't wanna see the backs of houses. So we don't care how many houses are there, as long as there's a lot of trees. And so one of the very useful things in the workshops is picture preference surveys. So you can show different types of developments and you kind of get an idea of, here are the things that are favorable, here are the things that aren't. And then that leads to zoning ordinance. You develop your standards to match and work towards that.
I guess the idea of the website seems like it could be good, right? As far as ease of access.
So people can always, in real time, like...
We haven't seen it any other way, other than request a copy from us. Usually, it's a link that they include to our website.
Yeah. Could we do that on our own township website? As, you know, as far as like, instead of having a dedicated one, we could publish like a link or something to it. I don't know, it just seems...
Thank you, Doug.
Think it out, I'll have a hater of it.
Yeah. What I can do is I can show staff some samples of ones. Like, we have a guy who does it, I call him up, and the thing's there. It's kind of magical. He's got templates, got whatever the graphic or the seals, he plugs it in and it's beautiful.
Easier just to find on a concrete website, it'll be more interactive. Regardless of where it's at, as long as it's linked to...
Yeah, sometimes...
Yeah, as long as you're not using shadows, or something. I mean, it's gotta look professional.
GeoCities.
Okay. You gotta have something that looks the part for the process.
So I guess, I don't, going down the western, Task One, right, the steering committee, right? I think that will, I believe it is the township's intent that it would be the planning commission. Ross, is that correct?
That was what was discussed at the last joint meeting, is that the planning commission would be the steering body.
Yeah, and so Zach, does that answer your question there?
Yep, we made a decision.
Yep. Okay, just wanna make sure that's clear and you aren't wondering.
But also then, they did know, and I believe if I recall correctly, that they are going to have the ultimate say.
Yeah, and I think that was documented, as Ross mentioned, where we would send a recommendation similar to how we do with...
That's how we do all those things.
Item number two, I think, says the township and Carlisle Wardman. So I believe that we, as a planning commission, should define like maybe the top five things that we wanna address in our master plan. It's a good way to then go from there with workshops or surveys. And that will help us say, hey, our survey should ask about these items, right?
Yeah, I would say my opinion is, everyone who's here and who's not here, go through this review. I know that you all had a chance, or most have had a chance, to go through our existing master plan. Just kind of take both and do a look at, identify areas where you think that they're good, there may be improvements, put notes together. You know, we can share notes and have a good discussion next time around.
Sorry, our exchange student is coming back from her first junior varsity game. Trying to get her bag. Really trying to get her bag.
So I think the plan is to include this as an agenda item on every meeting moving forward, regardless if we get to it or not. We want to keep it as a consistent item on the agenda. So taking this information, like I said, go home, look through again, look through with the master plan, kind of put some notes together, get some ideas together. And we'll have a chance to discuss it the next meeting or the following meeting or moving forward.
'Cause I know I'll get asked to update each one of the board meetings, so.
And I think, yeah, we can work out and do it more as we get into the meetings more. Is there any other items on the master plan discussion, officials?
Well, I think this looks good, get things rolling.
Yeah, I would get, like, you're gonna have to, this will leave us a little more time out next meeting, maybe.
I'm guessing we'd like to see the ball start being booted around in January.
Yep. My plan is to...
My plan is to revise this based on discussion here, get that out. Well, you guys don't work on Fridays, don't do you? Get that out so that a revised version can be here. And with a better description of, "Here's a decision to be made, here's a decision to be made." Pop that out a bit more.
How long a survey would you look at? How many questions would you be...
That is a hotly debated question as well. From my understanding, folks who are more involved in this on a regular basis, if you get more than fifteen minutes, people will stop being interested and just start clicking things. So editing it is a very, it took six to eight months for that community. It wasn't just because they were going willy-nillys. They had all these things that they wanted, and it got big, and then they tested it. It was too big, so they pared it back. One of the things I'm gonna do for next meeting, as well as have some samples of surveys, which I don't want anyone to say that this is, or take it that here are questions you have to use, but just to get you thinking of, here are certain questions. In some communities, Carlisle Wardman has been working for Sawa Township for many, many years. They have same basic questions every master plan cycle because they want to track it over time. You know, are we actually approving trails? It's a tracking mechanism.
Seems like you'd have that broken down into kind of specific areas that you wanted to look at or address.
Yep.
Like maybe rec and, you know, development, this, that, you know. I think, like you said, if you had it, if it's too big, it just sort of starts over.
Yeah, and so that's one of the tools to make it feel less big of, "Here's a section about housing." And so you gotta do all the housing questions, and then you kind of refresh your palate and ask questions about commercial stuff, and questions about transportation. So there's grouping to try to make it feel less big.
Yeah, I think in our township for participation, that's how I feel, based on the last years of meetings, that we would focus like on the twenty-three corridor, then on our lakes, right? People care a lot about those, and just from meetings we've had and comments. And then also traffic.
Parks have been one of the things we've had to come up, look at it, too.
Should we plan on allowing time at every meeting for a call to the public on this, my item?
We have to call the public every meeting.
Why don't we do, but is this something that, like, as far as just timing goes and planning, something that we should anticipate?
I don't know if we need a separate call to the public.
No, not separate, I'm just asking generally, do you anticipate this is something that comes up, and once it starts, like, in twenty minutes or half hour?
We can always encourage also comments that already, that people aren't able to make during a public meeting. They can submit via email, and I can distribute to the planning commission, so.
Yeah, because I started this with Dan, and then it kind of just stopped, and now we're starting again, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there are a couple of hands up already.
Yep, so we're still missing, I know, but.
Yeah, exactly. So is there any more discussion for the commission on the master plan discussion? At this point, Zach's clear on what our plans are and our intent is. So if not, then we'll move on to call the public. Go ahead, Scott.
Urban Lake, the developer, blow up my mind, I guess he thinks you're stupid. But he's not putting the septic system through because he's trying to save the wetlands. He's putting the septic sewer system through because there won't be no parks in there. Come on, you sit there and did all this scheme, how he's trying to save the wetlands. All right, now he's gonna give us, give you guys access to the community for a park, I guess, to walk the trails back there. I don't know anybody's gonna wanna walk down White Lake Road. I don't want to drive down it now through there. And I surely don't want kids walking through there with a bicycle to get back in there, or anybody walking down White Lake Road to get in there. So you're just gonna invite people in there. There's no place to park, unless you're gonna park on the streets in there to go walk the trails. And if you guys do go any further with that, I would suggest that you take some of that set aside land there, that open space, and make a parking area. If you're gonna have them deed the property over to the township, the trails and stuff. If you're gonna have that parking area, why would it suggest anybody walking or riding a bicycle down White Lake Road? Okay? And that police report, road study, that's a joke, PD, he hired people, they're working for him. I did a study years ago, ten years, and they went up into the COVID area, which is what, they might have had two to three years with the study because COVID, there was nobody on the roads. I ain't going down on twenty-three, there was nobody, and we had the township shut down during the time that study was taken. So I would suggest that when we hit the final, that we go landscaping, the police, state police, like I did, and get a study of the accidents down through here, because that's what I did. And even the state cop did it for me, nine to ten years. He said, "Holy crap, crap, mountain accidents down through here." You know, I don't want impact, I don't wanna know how many accidents are down through here. Go down to, just take your time, drive, and look at all the blind driveways, look at all the humps in the road. I don't wanna encourage kids to ride a bike down or anybody. We walked down White Lake Road down on the other side of Den Hill. We got a little bit extra pavement area down there, a little bit safer down there, but it's still a little hippy. But, I mean, you guys really wanna open up that for the public, and that's fine. Consider a parking area, because I wouldn't encourage anybody walking down the street. Maybe those two streets to get in there. And you gotta run the, is this, this could be owned by an association. Are they gonna want anybody in there? They're gonna wanna eventually close it down? I mean, you're gonna move in here and build houses. If he's talking eighty, ninety houses, are they gonna want people from the outside coming in all the time? I mean, they're gonna tell you, "Oh yeah, we'll do anything you guys want, as long as we get them out of houses we get in there." So, but the master plan, I hope I see you talking, but I hope you guys, we use a committee, a little bit of more committee action for the questions. And the steering committee's fine, but we need a lot of the public, you know, comments for that, too. So, but that's good, that's good, so, thanks a lot, Keith.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else with public comments?
Yeah, I'd like more, two, one, two.
Hey, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm happy to announce that bedtime is officially over for the kids, so that's good news. I have a couple fast questions. For Zach Michaels, when you were talking about timeframes for the different phases on master planning, what was, what was the timeframe or range for the visioning component? I missed that.
Short end, around three months, longer, nine months. And I suspect here, it's going to be closer to the nine months if there's an interest in having multiple visioning sessions or workshops.
Okay, and where, I know that we've talked really lucidly about parks and rec planning and adding that component in, where would that fit within these spaces? Would that be visioning also?
Yes, so that's one of the other decision points that I didn't want to bring up tonight because it's a bit more complex. But there is a separate, it can be a component of this, a parks plan. So you have transportation, housing, whatever, and parks and recreation or trails. But in order to get, to be eligible for grants and monies from the state and other entities, you have to have a parks and recreation plan with very specific elements. So if one of the goals that comes out of the visioning session is, "We really wanna have parks or trail along the ITC corridor," or whatever, the fellow who sits next to me, he basically does parks and recreation plan. So one of the things we could do is, if that is identified as an important goal, to be able to work those plans and get those grant monies, is we could then fire up and do a park and recreation plan concurrently with this. So there's not a lot of, there would be savings in that, they could be done at the same time, and a lot of the information would be similar and feed to each other.
Okay. And I think that what you're saying is exactly in line with what my research says, too, that any kind of funding we want on that really needs to be written in a very specific way. And then also, when you mentioned the implementation plan as sort of an option that our planning commission could do, would that include a process where that P3, look closely at the ordinances that maybe need to be addressed, and work to align those to the new master plan? Is that part of the implementation process?
Yes, it could be, yes.
And then, Kurt, I heard you mentioned budget. And I know that the board has budget discussions coming up at the beginning of the year. But do we know if, I mean, I don't know how a budget for master planning gets set. It's like the chicken and the egg, because we keep talking about budget, but then the master plan, the Carlisle Wardman firm is saying that your budget is sort of dependent on, you know, how much community involvement you wanna have. We don't really know that yet, so I'm just wondering maybe how and when the budget is anticipated for next year's master planning?
Well, Sarah, I would believe that the budget process is gonna work like this. Once we get more structure to what we need, right now, we're paying Carlisle Wardman based on, you know, a retainer fee plus for any special projects that they do. So as we go through this, there will be certain things that would be part of the process of being a planner. And then other things directly related to, for example, if we decide we wanna have a parks and rec plan put together, that's gonna be above and beyond, and will be somebody probably other than Zach doing the work. So I would look for sometime around February, or once we've kind of got the process started. We need to push the ball down the court a little bit to see exactly, you know, how many people we have that wanna participate in this. Are we talking thirty people? Are we talking a roomful of people? If we do that, how many different types of visioning sessions do we wanna have? My thought is to have several different visioning sessions, rather than one great big one and have everybody doing a free-for-all. So what I think we will see is, on Wednesday night, there will be a session on transportation. On Friday night, there'll be one on commercial. On, you know, Monday, we'll have one on just the rural estates area. Development, zoning, so you go through all those things. And I see, basically, several sessions that we will be participating in with people, with Carlisle Wardman meeting the process through their, well, is it facilitator, whatever you wanna call it, to get an idea of where we wanna go with things. Now, once that's done, we, I don't wanna put the cart in front of the horse, but the survey is gonna come before the visioning sessions. So we've gotta get the survey questions put together. And probably the steering committee, based on what Zach comes up with, I would guess our survey would be headed out the door February, early March?
That's doable, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, I, again, I'm just giving you, I don't know what's gonna happen. We could be shut down by COVID here in another two months, and then we, you know, push everything back. Hopefully, it won't. But, you know, again, things come up and stuff falls in front of, unfortunately, the master plan for some of these things, when people have special land use processes they want done.
Right.
So we got the regular work that has to get done by the planning commission, as well as the master plan. So that's gonna take, that's gonna take everybody's time up here, as well as the people who wanna participate. So, yeah, we'll be spending a lot of time together, I guess.
Well, maybe it's a process that will evolve. We start with a budget that we have, and then it, I don't know, maybe changes over time as needs arise. I don't know fully how that works, you know, with local government, but.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a specific budget a year yet, but it's more than $10,000, I can tell you that. So I mean, there are some numbers that have been pushed around, but it's more than ten grand, so. For ten grand, I don't think I can get Zach to come up here more than once or twice, so.
Well, I have just one last question, and that is, so this description of phases, I took a bunch of notes, but I'm wondering if Zach or if the planning commission has some kind of document that would just sort of give an overview of what these phases are, different components that might be included, I'm sorry, included? Like a roadmap, something like a PDF that I could share publicly? Or should I just type up my own notes and share that?
There is the document that Zach was reading from, that he prepared, that's posted on the website.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I'll just use that then, I'm sorry. It's hard for me to see on the, on the phone what exactly you're showing on your screen, so. I'll go find that document.
It's a four-page document that says, "Master Plan Draft Work Plan for Tyrone Township."
Awesome, love it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I don't see anyone.
Yeah, that's it, I don't think, there's only...
Close public comment, miscellaneous business, I don't know.
I don't think there is any.
Anything, I had a question for Zach, if you had any updates on the bill that was going through the Michigan House and Senate regarding the ability to rent out your home as a...
My understanding is it's still in the Senate Subcommittee. I do have a couple of things I can touch on that were raised earlier in the meeting, if you'd like. So there, for open space preservation, there are a couple of tools for that. Again, my background, local unit of government, I was the guy where the rubber hit the road, and how am I gonna enforce this? So that informs my view and perspective. The township could do a development agreement that says, "Here are the terms and conditions, and this space will be preserved as open space." And then you have basically a contract that you can take to the court and enforce. At the basic level, it's part of the approval for the plan. And if they violate conditions, then you can bring action against them. Another way, and this is kind of a belt and suspender and drawstring approach, is if the open space, if the development rights for that are sold or managed by a land conservation entity, a legacy land trust down by my area, there are some communities that require the open space is protected by one of those entities because that's above and beyond the homeowners association. So if there is turnover, there is this outside group that comes in every year and audits and looks at what's going on there. Let's see. One thing I want folks to kind of keep in the background is, one of the things your current master plan says roughly that we would like to encourage more planned unit developments because we see it's a way to do better development than just regular site condominiums. So since we're able to road test this, I want you to think about the process and ways that can make it easier for the township to process and for the Afka. Not to eliminate approvals or conditions, but just kind of process to encourage this option as opposed to straight-up development. I will touch briefly on the interpretation of the language for access. So one of the things that is a bit nicer as a consultant as opposed to regular staff is that it's kind of a bit clear that, "I'm not the person who wrote this language. I'm not tied to it. I'm telling you my best interpretation of what the language is." Doesn't mean I agree with it, or I think it's good, well, rather. Doesn't mean I agree with what it's doing, but the interpretation is how I read the text using all these legal reading processes. So in this case, as I mentioned, I can make a strong case that it was purposely kind of wishy-wah... So in this case, as I mentioned, you, I can make a strong case that it was purposely kind of wishy-washy because it allows flexibility, which is what planned unit developments are supposed to do, is encourage flexibility. But beyond that, and, and the larger part of my investigation was first looking to the plain text. So this isn't just for zoning ordinance, but this for all statute interpretation of what does the plain text actually say? And folks will tell you who are much smarter than I that if the intent says one thing, but the plain text says something that's very clear, you have to go with what the text says, even if the intent is something different. So that's important for drafting, is that you want to get it as close as possible and kind of shake it down while you're drafting new language. And so we examined the must and the can and how those terms are defined. Then another concept is looking to, how does the rest of the document handle the situation? And so that's where I referenced other parts of the zoning ordinance where it addresses access. And the idea is that if you have a statute or an ordinance, the presumption is that the document was meant to sit together kind of in a similar fashion. And so you look to see what other sections do, and if there is specific language in one section that's not in another, there's the presumption that it was omitted here on purpose. And now it may or may not be the intent of the person to have omitted it, but that's how the legal review is done. So I, I wanted to be clear that I went through all those steps, that's my best understanding of what the text means. It may not, it may or may not be what the drafter intended, but that's how it reads through my interpretation. One last thing I'll leave you to think about. In a couple of communities, I prepare draft motions and draft resolutions for the body, so here's your report, and here are motions that you can use. I really like, especially for complex things, but even for regular site plans, having a resolution, a draft resolution for the body to look at, because it allows you guys to look at it, allows the public to look at it, allows the applicants to look at it. And you can document all the information you had when you made the decision, you can document in there, here are the waivers we did, here's why we did waivers, and for staff, and in the future, it's beautiful. You have one document, you can say, here's what they decided, here's why they decided, here are the conditions, boom. So start thinking if that's something that you may have interest in. It, it takes a little bit of effort to get it established at first. But once you have it running, it's pretty nice, and the way I like to draft them is neutral. So for example, it, it wouldn't be drafted to say, we recommend approval. It would be we recommend, or we, we grant favorable slash unfavorable recommendation. So as you guys are going through it, you'd say in paragraph fifty, I want this to read approve or not approve. So again, it's very clear that you guys are the deciders, but you just have to go through and scratch and add or subtract things from it. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks, Zach. I think I, Ross, if you did receive a live in the public, I'd have to show it, I don't know if it's a, you know, but it regulates right to what Zach just explained thoroughly, so I'll just share it for the moment here. Basically, the, it's regarding the section eleven oh two E that Zach just clarified for us.
Can you give it back?
And we all received this and we're able to read it, right, just for. Personally sent it, I'll show it here for a little bit. All right, if there's nothing else, entertain the motion for adjournment.
Just don't move.
Thanks, Aaron.
Good support.
Check, Ed.
All right.
So, there's like a whole song and dance you got to do.
What's that?
I don't know. You put in the area.
So is that thing there, is going to be on the website?
Yep.